Afternoon. Welcome to the Pittsburgh Public Schools School Committee meeting. Mr. Walsh, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
School Committee Chair Report, I have nothing to report. Resource Committee, nothing at this time. Mr. Stevens, thank you. School Building Needs.
Nothing at this time. Other than the Crocker Building Committee will be meeting tomorrow. All right, thank you.
Policy Committee.
Nothing new to report, aside from we have a couple of policies for us to approve. I'm sorry, we have our approved deleted policies in our action items.
Great, thank you. Questions? Student Support Committee.
Yes, we met on June 11th. And, I'm sorry, I'm just kind of looking back at the minutes on my phone, so we had follow-up reports from Rowan Demarche about the interventions kind of put in place over the year from a meeting that several of us were present at for social-emotional learning issues of certain students in the schools. That's progressing. They're, you know, they've got a lot of different interventions that they're kind of looking at and putting in place in that route. And there's also members of the union that are a part of that initiative, so we felt like we got some good information about the direction that that's going. We also had Assistant Superintendent Apology Aquinto report on the new social studies curriculum frameworks that are due to be approved this month, and what changes that will mean, and who will really be spearheading those changes in this district. So, there's a group going this summer. Dave Kelly, Tim Cannon, Mrs. Sax are going with Paula to the Department of Ed meeting in July about those framework changes, and particularly there's interest about what's going to happen with civics curriculum. And then we had questions about reading lists, what students are actually required to be reading in terms of literature. It does seem to be very dependent on a teacher that somebody might have, so we were looking for information about what are core texts. We found some information about that. The high school, we have, we might be looking into getting some more information about that at the high school. And that's pretty much it. I don't know, Aiden, a few?
I think those are it.
Rosemary, a few?
Any questions? Thank you, Ms. LaBelle Pierce. School Personnel Committee.
School Personnel met Friday afternoon and will have a recommendation on tonight's agenda.
Thank you. Questions?
Yes, I have a question.
Yes.
May I have a copy of the minutes of the meeting?
Of the School Personnel Meeting from Friday?
That would be, Mr. Zina would have those. I do not have those tonight. We just met Friday.
I think it's important that each person here understand what happened at that meeting, through the meeting. So, how soon could we get them? I don't know who you said would have them?
Mr. Zina.
Mr. Zina? He's on that?
Human Resources.
He's on that committee?
He is head of Human Resources for the Pittsburgh Public Schools.
But he's not on that committee?
He--
He's the recording person on that committee.
Oh. Well, is he here?
Yes, he is.
Yes.
Could I ask him for the minutes?
Yes, you surely can. You're going to provide the minutes.
I can provide them.
Right, not right now.
I can have them for you tomorrow.
Well, how can we vote tonight without being up to date on what happened at the meeting?
Point of order. If we're voting on the recommendation, there will be discussion--
That's right, at that time, on the action item.
So, when we get to this, Rosemary, we'll have discussion.
Well, I'd just make a comment that, and I don't know why you said point of order, Pete, maybe you could explain that to me, but--
Because not the appropriate time for that question?
Oh, you want that question to come in at a--
Right.
Okay.
Moving on. Executive Committee, nothing to report. Student Report, apparently they're gone for the summer.
Oh, no.
Are they gone for the summer?
They're at Girls and Boys State.
Oh, they are? Okay, all right. That's a good enough excuse.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, no student report. Approval of the minutes from the previous School Committee meeting of June 4th, 2018?
Make a motion.
Motion made?
Seconded.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The next item, Executive Session. We were planning on going in for Executive Session, but there's been some changes relative to the rank and file, and whether or not they had enough votes. That will be readdressed again on Wednesday, so we will, there will be no need for Executive Session. Communications and Superintendent's Evaluation.
Did you want to do the retirees first?
Oh, you want to do that now? Okay. All right, moving to Superintendent's Report, Retiring Teachers, 2018.
Okay.
Yeah?
So, here we are. There are seventeen retirees this year, which is, you know, quite a large crowd. Not all these folks are retiring. I doubt some of them are just supporting fellows, teachers who are retiring. Deb, you had Paula and I really worried here that at the last minute you were going to retire. So, I just want to say, it's, you'll see that there's a number of people of different amounts of years in the school district, but in total, those seventeen teachers have three hundred and sixteen years of service. You feel tired?
Yeah.
Yeah. I think, I can tell you, everybody does this week, given the phone calls that I'm receiving. But we just want to thank, this is just an opportunity for us as a school district to thank all of you for the work that you've done and your service. And I will be calling, not everybody was able to make it, but I will call you up. And Mayor, we have a small gift for each of them if you wanted to do the presentation of that. So, Esti Cosmeitas first, and you have been with the Pittsburgh Public Schools for thirty years. Thirty years. And then Deb Cheftelain, six years. Six years with us, but--
The second time around.
The second time around. Was that a winner, the second time around? Good. Then we have Kim Belio. And Kim, twenty-nine years.
Thank you.
Twenty-nine years. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Kim.
And then Donna, Ann Salusa.
Oh, thank you.
Donna, you are thirty-six years.
Thank you.
Incredible. Wow. And still standing. Really great. Patty Marsh.
I did.
Thirty-one years.
It says one.
Thirty-one years, yeah. One year. That's pretty good. So, thirty-one years.
No, I've been at Crocker all thirty-one years.
Yeah, wow. Well, you were at Crocker thirty-one years. Now you were--
Half a year.
Exactly.
Lunenburg.
Right, in Lunenburg.
Thank you.
And then Doug Grant, six years with us, Doug. Congratulations. Donna Young, fourteen years. Oops, I'm sorry. Doug, we gave you a scarf and we're going to trade it for a tie.
We're only able to do one thing at a time. That's right. I think this will look work better if it's a tie.
We just proved it for the rest of the world, that two of us are only able to do one thing at a time.
I noticed when you worked that.
We'll trade you a scarf for a tie. All right. All right, and then Tom Hughes.
Tom, you look like you're twenty-one.
This guy gets a hug.
Thank you.
Because he was on my search committee, so you can blame him. So, thank you to all. Did I get everybody? Did I miss anyone? No? No? All right, great. So, thank you to all of you. Let's have a round of applause.
Can we get a good photo of all the retirees?
All the retirees. I was going to say graduates. Let's get all the retirees up here, right here around this table.
Wow, all those new teachers.
Should we say cheese?
We just need to pick a camera to look at.
More money, schools out.
Just think it's really Thursday night, not Monday night.
All set?
Yes, sir.
Great, thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Congratulations. I guess we'll raffle off the extra ties and scarves. Somebody will claim them later.
Okay. So, that, if you want to go back to the rest of the agenda now, so--
So, we're back with Communication, Superintendent's Evaluation. Mr. Walsh.
Okay. Provide an overview and introduction. Pittsburgh School Committee hires and evaluates the superintendent of the Pittsburgh Public Schools. The current evaluation covers the superintendent's performance for the period from July 1st, 2017, through June 30th of 2018. I'm going to wait a second here. Bear with me till everybody leaves.
I'll just say, I was hoping Mr. Grant was going to make it till my next daughter comes up.
Oh, this is Doug.
Chemistry. 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 I mean, they're all great. I just have a personal relationship with that teacher. It was great. I know you've seen them all.
All right. So, the current School Committee consists of seven members. The mayor, who's chair, four elected, and at this time, two appointed members. The members are Mayor Steven D. Natale, Chair, Mr. Peter Stevens, Vice Chair, Ms. Sally Cragan, Ms. Jean LaBelle Pierce, Ms. Rosemary Reynolds, who was sworn in on January 2nd of this year, Mr. Aiden Horgan, and myself, Mr. James Walsh, who were both appointed at a joint convention of the City Council and the School Committee on March 6th, 2018. Just to point out, three members of the Committee, of the School Committee, Ms. Reynolds, Mr. Horgan, and Mr. Walsh, have less than six months on the current School Committee. The tool that is used to evaluate the superintendent is divided into four broad categories called standards. These standards are Standard 1, Instructional Leadership; Standard 2, Management and Operations; Standard 3, Family and Community Engagement; and Standard 4, Professional Culture. Each standard is subdivided into what are called indicators. Each standard consists of four to six indicators, and each indicator can consist of up to three evaluation points. The total evaluation tool consists of thirty-four evaluation points. The members rank each evaluation point and provide narrative to support their ranking. The rankings for each evaluation point are exemplary, proficient, needs improvement, unsatisfactory, and not observed. An overview of the evaluation points will be presented this evening. I will not be covering each of the thirty-four evaluation points, covering the four standards. It should be noted at the outset that the superintendent did not receive less than the two highest ranks, exemplary or proficient. So, Under Standard 1, Instructional Leadership. We deal with items such as lesson development support, instructional practices, diverse learner needs, adjustment to practice, administrative goals, observations and feedback, knowledge and use of data, school and district goals, and that's it. In a couple of the comments, I'd just like to point out that were provided in the evaluations. Under Diverse Learner Needs, Superintendent Ravenel has set high expectation that students of all abilities and needs are meeting with the curriculum to match. Advanced learning initiatives and social-emotional strategies are indicative of this. Under Administrative Goals, Andre is someone who pushes himself not only to respond to current circumstances, but to anticipate what is coming in the future. Under Observations and Feedback, the superintendent gives formative and, yeah, summative feedback to principals. Under Standard 2, Management and Operations, and I should say, under Standard 1, all of the indicators, he received exemplary, a hundred percent, from all evaluators. Under Lesson Development Support, it was seventy-five percent exemplary and twenty-five percent proficient. Under Management and Operations, these cover plans, procedures, and routines, student safety, health, and social-emotional needs, operational systems, recruitment and hiring strategies, induction, professional development, and career growth strategies, time for teaching and learning, time for collaboration, laws and policies, ethical behavior, and fiscal systems. Some of the comments that I'd like to share with you. Under Plans, Procedures, Superintendent Ravenel manages a competent team. He has established routines and processes that work well. Under Safety, Student Safety and Health, the superintendent is committed to meeting all these needs. Anytime there has been a crisis, a tragedy, or something that is required by law, Andre takes the leadership and does his work seriously, soberly, and thoroughly. Under Recruitment and Hiring Strategies, this is a very strong team. Andre hires people who are good at their jobs and are people who care about their students. Under Induction, Professional Development, and Career Growth Strategies, Andre never rests on his laurels. The offerings professional development are timely and of great quality. Moving on to Standard 3, Family and Community Engagement. This includes family engagement, community and business engagement, student support, family collaboration, two-way communication, culturally proficient communication, and family concerns. And some of the responses that were provided in the evaluations. Under Family Engagement, there has been an increase in the way that information is conveyed to parents and families effectively and efficiently. Under Community and Business Engagement, Superintendent Ravenel networks and partners with many organizations and businesses. He is well-known in the community, and more importantly, well-respected. Student Support, the push to introduce Chromebooks was a big positive push in the district, and have content of coursework available to parents is very important and beneficial. And finally, under this category, under Family Concerns, Superintendent Ravenel always follows up on issues brought before him in a timely and an effective manner. And the last standard, Standard 4, Professional Culture, the evaluation points include commitment to high standards, mission and core values, meetings, policies and practices, communication skills, continuous learning of staff, continuous learning of administrator, shared vision development, response to disagreement, and conflict resolution. And a sampling of the comments that were provided under Mission, under Commitment to High Standards, this is a constant message by Andre throughout the district to administrators, to faculty, to staff. Mission and Core Values. Andre believes in the values and missions of the Pittsburgh Public Schools, and I think that is very obvious in how he projects what the public school district is doing. Under Meetings, he is there, he is prepared, and listens and considers to alternative ideas. Under Communication Skills, I think this sums it up greatly. He is a great communicator. Continuous Learning of Staff, there is a lot of professional development in the school district. He sees the value of continuous professional development by the teachers within the district, whether they be elementary, middle school, or high school. Under Conflict Resolution, he gathers the facts, he considers the options, he presents careful and logical solutions, and works well with all involved. As I said, all of the thirty-four evaluation points were exemplary or proficient. The other one that I'll mention, I'll just point out that where he received a split between exemplary, I wish there was a better word because I can't pronounce that one, and proficient. Under Standard 2, Management of Operations, it was under the time for collaboration. It was of the, fifty percent of the evaluations ranked the superintendent under exemplary, and fifty percent ranked as proficient. And being new, I'm not sure what we do next with the evaluation, if we vote to accept this.
You'll need to sign it.
Okay.
And then it'll go to HR.
Okay.
It goes in my file.
Okay, sounds good.
All right, so we can sign it tonight when we're done?
Yes.
I can give it before we leave.
Any questions from the committee?
So, I want to thank--
I'd like to make a comment that that sounded wonderful.
True.
And it all rang true, everything?
Yes. Well, thank you.
Congratulations.
I've enjoyed working with the committee, and I enjoy my job. I was glad to see that when someone said that I do it in a sober way, that really should be key, sober, when you're being-- But I understand the two meanings of that.
Yeah.
But thank you. I appreciate it.
I have to say, it's nice to summarize an evaluation that is positive, and accurate, and truthful. It was nice to--
Thank you.
The most difficult part was to pull out, to limit the number of responses that I had to include, so it was--
Well, you should get an exemplary for pulling it all together, because every year, it's a lot of work, because you're gathering information from seven different people, and the instrument itself, and I've narrowed it, it's quite an unwieldy instrument, but thank you.
I inquired, is if we gave you a less-than-flattering evaluation, does that force you to stay here? I guess that doesn't work that way. Damn.
Well, you could have refused to sign off for my private papers.
I know. Thank you.
All right. We've got the Be Positive component--
I'm sorry. I meant to jump in there. May I just communicate one other piece of information?
Sure.
There is a meeting tomorrow night at Pittsburgh High School at 7:00 PM for band, chorus, and musical parents. We're trying to reinvigorate that parent association. There are, I would love to have Dennis Cucchiara and Rick Kazangian come in sometime to be recognized for the work that they do, because they were band parents when I went to high school, and their kids are as old as me. And they're still working the concession stand, and Dennis does the rapping booth every year. So, I'm really hoping the rest of us can kind of step it up here, and I think I've found a home in the concession stand, but--
Right.
But we, there's just such great talent, and if we pool it all together, maybe we can, we can give some assistance to Ms. Greenlee over there.
Yeah.
So, if people are listening and you have, and you have interest, please come. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
I have a communication item.
Yes.
I put flyers on everyone's, almost everyone's place. So, Riverfront Family Theater, which started in 2011, which my mother and I started at the, right next door to Shacks, and we've since moved it to, since moved it to the library, we're doing our spring show, Fairy Tales and Fables from Finland. I think we are the only family theater, children's theater, perhaps outside of Finland, Bob would know better, that actually has devoted, this is our third year doing Finnish-inspired fairy tales. Why Finnish? Because nobody knows them. They're wonderfully obscure, they're very funny, and we've got a bunch of Pittsburgh Public School kids involved, which is really exciting. Also, some children from Lamonster and Lunenburg. So, you're all invited to come Sunday, June 24th, at the Gassejula, at Sima Park, 2:00 PM, or Thursday, June 28th, 6:30 PM, at Pittsburgh Public Library. This year, Riverfront is going to also be performing at the Highlands Residential Long-Term Care Facility, will be performing for residents, many of whom may be physically handicapped or, anyway, have dementia. But we bring in the children's theater kids to perform for them and sing songs, and this is really exciting. Yeah, it's so worth it, and our kids do a great job. So, I think we've got nearly a dozen kids, and a bunch of parents and grandparents, and we're open to anyone. So, our schedule is there, and that's my communication. This is our big show of the year.
Thank you. Thank you.
Just one addition to the June 24th. If you want to come and watch the play and have a good dinner beforehand, their chicken barbecue begins at 11:00 AM at Sima Park as well.
Great.
Yeah, it's a full day of offerings, actually.
Yes, it is.
Excellent. Questions? Thank you. Public comment, period, five minutes allowed for public comment. Is there anyone wishing to make a public comment? Please come to the center table. Be Positive, is that? Yes, that would be you.
That, well, not just me.
And Mr. Waffles, of course.
Thank you. So, this is Mr. Waffles', oh my gosh, is this his third visit of the day? I think so. We started our day at Rheingold in Mrs. Dan Caugh's class, moved along to the Big Kids Learning Perspectives, and then went over to Crocker at St. Anthony's for Lisa Vitelli's reading program. And then on Wednesday, we'll be at South Street. And I've handed you additional notes from Kathy Walker, the guidance, she's a social worker, but she's the guidance over at South Street. And we work with some kids who've experienced some pretty heavy-duty trauma over there. We deal with some typical kids. We deal with some kids who are challenged with their, you know, reading and behavioral kind of story at this point in their lives. Mr. Waffles has been doing this since I brought him home from Ahimsa Haven, giving him some time off to acclimate. And then we also have Fiona, who's a wonderful Great Dane owned by Helen Donlin, and a new friend, Teresa Nally, who has come to kind of support our pet teams, and she comes to all of our classroom events. And then we have Joanne Boulanger, who is the mom of a really sweet little dog named Bella, who's a Sato from Puerto Rico. So, Joanne just joined our group. So, we now have three regular pet therapy folks who go to all the different schools, and we're really happy to do it. You can read in details, in terms of the data that I, all of our teachers were able to provide in terms of, you know, how the kids did, and the way their reading levels went up, and then some anecdotal information about having pets in the classroom not only made kids want to read to the pets on that day, but actually had long-term effects, that kids would moderate and improve their behavior and their willingness to read at other times, knowing that that then meant they would be eligible to read to pets. So, a child who really put their heart into reading throughout the week, you know, felt, felt like they'd really accomplished something. And we, at Rheingold, when Joanne and I are there together, we basically do half the class. So, kids get this, they get this frequently, and, you know, depending on circumstance, we always make the little circuit, and everyone says goodbye. In the Wednesday class, which I just emailed to you this afternoon, again, some traumatized kids with absolutely heartrending stories, children who lack a parent and who lack supports. But, you know, thank goodness for, you know, for our schools and for Mrs. Walker and their teachers, we've had some real kind of behavioral turnarounds because of children being exposed. And I'm really proud to say that Deb Roberts at Pittsburgh High School and Beth Foley here at Memorial are taking up the standard of pet therapy. And Deb has had her dog, her dog at Pittsburgh High School for most of the year, and then Beth will be bringing her dog, Lady, here to Memorial starting in the fall. So, I think, I mean, Andre, you're in touch with all the superintendents. Is there anyone doing what we're doing?
No one. At least I can say from Massachusetts, I don't know anyone else who has this kind of program that's really taken off by the staff, taking a lot of initiatives themselves.
Yeah. In the Wednesday class, which I just emailed to you this afternoon, again, some traumatized kids with, with absolutely heartrending stories. Children who lack a parent and who lack supports, but, you know, thank goodness for, you know, for our schools and for Mrs. Walker and their teachers, we've had some real kind of behavioral turnarounds because of children being exposed. And I'm really proud to say that Deb Roberts at Fitchburg High School and Beth Foley here at Memorial are, are taking up the standard of pet therapy. And Deb has had her dog, her, her dog at Fitchburg High School for most of the year, and then Beth will be bringing her dog, Lady, here to Memorial starting in the fall. So I think, I mean, Andre, you're in touch with all the superintendents. Is there anyone doing what we're doing?
No one. At least I can say from Massachusetts, I don't know anyone else who has this kind of program that's really taking off by the staff, taking a lot of initiatives themselves.
Yeah.
Both Deb and Beth Foley have taken this on as something that they're doing as part of their work, but it's also part of their life. So it's really, and the, the results are incredible. I've been in the classrooms, I've seen them, you know, the, the animals with the students, and the stories coming out of this are pretty powerful.
They, they are, and one of, one of the hopes, one of the plans is, is to work on an article about all of this over the summer. So it could be sent out towards the end of the summer to kind of, you know, put us on the official, you know, educational, I don't know, you know, record map. We have also presented at MASCE. We are planning to present there again in the fall, so.
If I could, this is just anecdotal, but I, when the dog, I think it's Abby here at Memorial?
Yeah.
Came in.
No, Lady, here it's Lady.
Lady, Lady. And is Abby at the high school?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. So when Lady came in at Memorial, my seventh grader came back so joyful and so happy and just, so I, I think it just, it's so real what the benefit is that it has on kids. But there, she was excited to go in again Monday, right? Is today Monday? Yeah, today, so that she could see her.
Yeah. Well, it's, it's a privilege, and as you can see, again, if any of you wanted to read Mr. Waffles' story right now, he would know exactly how to work with you. He would look at you, he would respond, he.
Sweet. Oh, that is so sweet.
He is, he is a very good cat. And, you know, he's, he's brought a lot of joy. So he was a rescue. He had been abandoned by his owner, who had tried to get him euthanized because he was ill. And he, he has hyperthyroids, who has no hair on his belly, and he's definitely from the scratch and dent store of cats. And here he is, like.
TMI.
I walked through the halls of Crocker and Rheingold, and I hear, "Hi, Mr. Waffles," and little voices as we walk by. So, you know, he's, and he's just one of our pets. Fiona is a hundred and twenty-pound Great Dane, and she moves, right, she moves like a horse. She's like really slow, but she is able to have five or six kids lean against her reading stories, and kids with behavioral challenges who do not like to be still and would rather be active. But her presence really calms kids down, and, you know, we're really proud of the program. So this is our third year, and with more to come.
Mr. Quinto, do you think Ms. Kitty would have qualified?
Oh, no.
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 Not everyone has to do it.
So you have a new grants page because Paula has identified a grant that she's been working on with other people at Central Office. It's the last one on the page.
Wow.
It's a grant that could be worth $2.5 million. I'm going to let Paula say a few words about that grant.
Yes, thank you. So there is a grant in partnership with Harvard Graduate School of Education and Project Zero.
Wow.
And the, the folks actually called us. They've had a grant similar to this for the past four years with other school districts, Andover, Salem, kind of that North Shore, and then Quabog. The grant, it's a, it's a big federal grant, multi-year grant, and the federal rules have changed, and the grant now requires a lead partner with a demographic to which Fitchburg meets, fits the bill. And it's to use arts as a vehicle for integrating the Howard Gardner sort of model of learning into core content, standards-based. So we're not giving up our reading program, or our math, or our science program. We're not, it's all about the standards in Massachusetts. I think it's a great opportunity, given the new social studies standards that are coming out. But it's to actually partner with Harvard Grant School of Ed, Project Zero museums. So we have one in town, but there's the Addison Gallery in Andover, it could be the Peabody Essex Museum, it could be Harvard's museums, it could be in Worcester. And then actually, so students visit, and then there's also an opportunity to bring artists into the schools. So the range for application is between $525,000 and $625,000 a year. We worked on an initial budget this year. First year is planning, so the budget is smaller, but after that, because of field trips and costs and tickets, et cetera. So the proposal will go in with the four years after year one. It's an estimate, approximate, nothing's in stone. We would during year one still have to develop MOUs, but we are looking for a full, up to $625,000 a year. So a number of our schools are interested, McKay, but then others as well. And it's, in the past, they've worked with teachers, there's a lot of professional development, so teachers in regular general ed classrooms can integrate arts, and it could be drama, music, visual art, storytelling, book writing into the mainstream classroom. But between thirty-two and thirty-five, teachers can attend professional development a year. So over the course of four years, you're talking about a hundred and twenty teachers could be impacted. That's thousands of kids and thousands of opportunities to integrate arts into academic standards-based learning. So we have the, deadline is July second. So this is a quick turnaround. One of the women from Project Zero spent the better part of today. We're working on documents now, and will, I think, the week, not this week, next week, there'll be another opportunity to meet once we kind of vet the narrative. But we plan to get it in by the deadline.
And that's why it's on your agenda, because you have to approve us to apply. And I think the fact that we were contacted, that the school district was contacted and said, "You should apply for this," is a good sign. We have a university and a museum in the city. So it's, could be a trifecta.
Creative economy is very important.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yep.
So thank you, but again, the lion's share of this is being done at Central Office right now with Paula, the lead, and Kelly, and some other folks. So that's a good thing to go. So another piece, about a year ago, maybe a little more than a year ago, I was going through the library and, at the high school, and had a few conversations with Kim Cochran. Kim, if you can come down and join us at the front table. Kim is, for lack of a better term, librarian, but really library media specialist, and that says a lot because, especially with the coming of the Chromebooks. Remember, the first day that the Chromebooks had been handed out, I went up to the library and went, "Wow, this is changing the dynamic of how this library is being used." Kim had already done a lot of work thinking about that, and she shared her dreams with me of, you know, how she would reconfigure, reorganize the library. Unfortunately, it's taken a year to really, not on your part, you were ready to go, but I think you were refining it throughout the year. So she has some great ideas for how to really change the whole nature of how the library at Fitchburg High School is structured. And I wanted to get a proposal in before the end of the school year so that you could appropriate the funds, hear what the, her ideas are. And the goal would be that we would be working on this over the summer so that come September, there would be a new face to the library. So Kim, if you want to talk, especially for those at home, about your kind of dream for what the library would look like.
Great, thank you. Over the course of the eighteen years that Fitchburg High's been in place, education has changed a little bit with the advent of more and more and more and more and more technology. We are so lucky at Fitchburg High now to have the Chromebooks in place. As Andre said, it's really changed the face of learning at that building. But the library is still in the 2000 era, which means we have a really welcoming space, but it's really not conducive to the kind of learning that goes on right now in, in the world of education. So my proposal is to create a space that's more flexible in terms of the ability to undertake group work from all different, all the different levels of learning in Fitchburg High, as well as to sort of upgrade the electronics, upgrade the electricity. So we have twelve outlets in the library. I don't need to say much more.
Yeah.
And the kids are all charging everything all day long. So the first thing on the proposal that I put out there is a tower, it's a charging tower, and if we had three of those charging towers, it would multiply the, the access to electricity by, I don't know, I didn't count the number of outlets on there, but it would multiply it. And the kids are desperate for electricity in that place. And to revamp the library by adding outlets would be very difficult because it's all concrete, and you'd have to drop wires from the ceiling and those kinds of things. So this makes it easy, and you can move them all around the library as well. So regardless of what they're charging, that will help.
Kim?
Yes?
What do those towers cost, do you know?
Yes, I had a.
We have the other list.
On there. Up the top of my head, I don't know, Steve.
Are they the ones called floor power hubs?
The freestanding floor power hubs. They're $850 a piece. Eight hundred and fifty dollars a piece. It's the last item on the quote at the back of the report.
Right.
Hundred and fifty-six, twenty-nine. The exact.
Yeah.
Do you see it at the bottom? It's called.
It's that.
So it'll be this one right here.
Eight hundred and fifty-six, twenty-nine.
That's the tower.
Eight fifty-six, twenty-nine a piece?
Yeah. They're called freestanding floor power hub by the aisle company.
Is this something, Kim, we could also maybe have one or two in the cafeteria or something along that line? I mean, is it needed, the extra outlets?
Electricity is needed in every room in the building. You know, there are only so many outlets. And if we have kids on Chromebooks, you need outlets, you need access to power. They are not remembering to charge their computers at home. And so when they get to school, they have to have access, or else they're, they're coming to the library to borrow another Chromebook because theirs is dead.
Because I know we've spent, I don't know, three or, three or $400,000 on Chromebooks, and they're not very good if we can't charge them.
Right. It helps. The electricity is key here. So that's, that's one resource that I'm hoping to bring into the library. And the other big one is the media table, and that's, it's not the next item on the list, but it's near the back. It's a table that has a computer screen.
There's a photo on the second page.
Right.
It's the next to the last item.
Yes, I'm skipping around, I apologize for that.
Yes, on page two in the middle.
Yeah.
It's got a, a screen at one end of the table, and then five chairs and.
Right. And in the middle of the table are units that each student can plug their laptop into so that they can project what they're talking about, the presentation that they've created with the other students at the table. And if a teacher's there, that they can do the same exact thing. So my proposal was to bring in two of those media tables so that we can increase the number of group areas in the library. So we would have those two media tables, and in addition, the new configuration of the tables and chairs would also be more conducive to working as groups, as well as in a classroom setting. So the, if you've been in the high school libraries, I know you all have, on the right-hand side from my desk is the computer lab, which all of those desktops are now pretty much out of date and hardly ever used because we all have Chromebooks now. I would reserve about six to ten of those desktops for emergency or printing purposes, but the rest can be replaced by a table where they put their Chromebooks on. Smaller space, able to see the, the projected screen, and they would all have outlets in the table. And they would all be on wheels, so you can have students sitting in an old-fashioned, straightforward, classroom-style, and then immediately change it to a boot section. So that's the work, working classroom area. I call it the old computer lab, right? Then beyond that, there'd be more of a, an area where they can study just in general. They would have couple café tables to make things a little different, but mostly just regular tables with wheels at one end and legs at the other, again, to make things flexible in the library. So the tables we have now are extremely heavy and very sturdy, except for now, their legs are falling off because people drag them. And when you drag a table, it loosens up the legs. And when a leg comes off of those tables, you're in really big trouble because those are very heavy. I know because one fell on me. So also the chairs, the upholstery that we have is, you know, it's showing a change. And if you had twelve hundred kids sitting on you all year long, you'd look, you know, kind of bedraggled. So the new chairs would not have upholstery, but they would be plastic, and they would also have handles so that they can be moved easily. Not putting wheels on the chairs, though. That in fights kind of driving around the room, which I'm not sure is a good idea. There was another item in my proposal at the very end, I think. The chairs, the easy chairs. We have some comfy chairs along the window in the library, and this is just another option for that, where it has a place to put the computer, it has a place to put the laptop that is sturdy and not going to be the flapping kind of desk chairs that we sometimes see at schools and colleges. This is a sturdy one where they can sit on any part of that chair, and it's not going to tip over and it's not going to be unstable. So, and you know, stu, high school students do not sit in a chair like everybody else. So, some of them. So these are, these are on wheels, I think, when I'm looking at it, but the ones that I'm looking at are not on wheels. They just, they would stay put. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
This looks great, and I think it's probably really important updates to do, but who, so do classes come into the library? What, what is the flow like in the library? Is it all just kind of, kids kind of being sent there on their own? Do you have teachers kind of coming into, or?
The answer to that question is yes.
Everything.
Everything that you just mentioned happens there. We have, this year we had an AP Learning Lab in there most of the day, but we also have classrooms that come and go. I do lessons with them, I do library information classes, and I also have students arrive on passes from all different areas of the building. So it's a very busy place. We use it in, I did also put, because Paula had left behind a couple of whiteboards last year, I spread them around the library and created little group areas, and so teachers were taking advantage of that as well.
That's good.
So they just send the group down, get them out of the classroom, the change of scenery. They can do their work in the library as a group. Libraries aren't quiet anymore.
No, they're not.
They're not meant to be. We don't, we don't need it to be quiet, well, within reason.
Since you're here, could I just ask to follow up? Who's, who teaches information literacy for you? And so, do you see all students, like, are you?
I try to.
Yeah.
I've worked with, last year I had over seventy classes.
Okay.
In the library doing just exactly that. So I work with whatever the teacher is teaching at the moment, whatever project they're undertaking. Often it's a research project or a writing project. They'll give me a heads-up ahead of time, and when they come in, I will lead the students through our resources, our electronic resources through Gale.
Mm-hmm.
And show them how to find the types of information that they're going to need. And I also show them the off-site resources that are safe to use. And I, I emphasize, obviously, the importance of finding good information that is trustworthy. So we also teach news literacy.
Okay, good.
All of these things are in the growing stages.
You teach that.
Yes. Well, you know, all of us.
Yeah, I think everybody.
Teach them, you know, proper research skills, but I consider myself an expert.
Yep.
We do, too.
And I try to get involved with as many teachers as I can in as many different disciplines. I'm not just for the English or history teachers, I, I work with all of them.
Okay.
If I can.
And I just, I think it's a great proposal. Putting on my librarian hat.
All right.
A lot has changed in eighteen years. Not only what a library is and what a library does, but how students and, how students learn and how teachers teach. And I think a library of eighteen or twenty years ago doesn't really meet those needs today. And I think it's great that you're proposing this now, and obviously in the hopes that this will be ready to go when school begins in September.
That would be good.
I think it'd be a great welcome to the students coming back and the new students coming in, as first-year students, so.
It is a wonderful space, and it's so bright, and it's a happy place to be. So this would just, it would just make it even more welcoming for the students.
Kim, we can, we can have. Kim, we can, we can have Bob put it on the next resource committee agenda.
It's already on your vote on.
Yeah, it's on your staff.
No, we totally bypass you, sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
We're trying to get a lot of stuff in so that we can get going this summer.
Kim has connections, so she doesn't have to lay your feet down.
My neighbor, I don't know why she didn't tell me about this.
I have a comment.
Yes.
So, you know, I've been on the school committee for a number of years. This is the first time that you've come forward to ask for something, and I just wanted to say thank you, because I see your library, I see what you do. My son is a freshman there. We've been involved with doing the STEM poetry contest, and I have to say, Dr. Cochran is really, you know, responsive to emails, totally about the students. And what I like about your proposal, it is so student-driven, like you're imagining students using every last inch of this. So...
Thank you.
Yeah, well, I feel like, wow, we haven't, have we had it? We haven't had any, anything about the library specifically, but you've given us something that really, you know, revives and, you know, sends it into the 21st century. So thank you, I look forward to, you know, to seeing this next fall.
Can you say a little bit about the Makerspace? And, I mean, you've got 3D printing going on in the media. This is an opportunity to talk about what's happening there.
Thank you, I forgot about that. In the area directly in front of the library desk, the circulation desk, there is a gathering of computers which will be going away and being replaced by a Makerspace, which students will come in, already they come in and they work on designing 3D objects. We have a 3D printer in the library, as well as down in Mr. Jacob's room on the second floor. And in my, mine, it's not really mine, the 3D printer in my office, I just say it's for everybody to use any which way they want to. So kids come and they make, you know, ornaments for their parents for Christmas, or they come and make a car that will, they'll try out on some kind of a race, and they try. Today we had a young man who made a little, a heart symbol for his girlfriend. So it's a learning tool that's really getting a lot of use, more and more as the years progress. So in addition to that, I also have brought in some fabric. I'm looking for a sewing machine, if anybody's got a sewing machine out there, I need a donation. I teach the kids about knitting, because that's a skill that I can share. We have clay, we have many people who've donated items, games and puzzles, and a couple of teachers who are crafters have donated a lot of materials. It's just been phenomenal, the results that we've been getting. And the kids, especially in the last few weeks of school, when they're just about to explode from all the final exams and everything, they're hanging out with the puzzles and they're pulling out the Fitchburgopoly game. How many of you remember that?
Yeah.
And other things. Boggle we have, which I make them play quietly, but it's hard to do. So the Makerspace is not just electronic design and creativity, it's all types of that. And we're going to, I'm hoping to bring in some Arduino, which is little electronics so that they can make fabric, lighted fabric types of things, or electronic doodads with their buttons, or... The kids will decide what happens, you know. If you just put the materials out there, they'll take it and fly. So that's my, my Makerspace in, it's always in the making, it's not ever really going to be finished.
So just for people at home, because they might have missed it, so you're looking for a sewing machine.
Need a sewing machine.
One that works, not one that someone wants to just get rid of.
What's that class?
So if somebody out there has a sewing machine
I didn't look at that.
they can contact central office, and that way, so, and we'll, we'll get one and get it to you.
I'll buy it.
Because I'm sure there's a sewing machine out there somewhere just waiting.
Well, I have one, and I donated it to somebody apparently.
Sorry, I need to speak up. I just heard the mayor say, "I'll buy it." Did you hear that, Mr. Stevens?
I did, I did say. The mayor's going to get you a sewing machine.
All right.
I will ask the procurement officer tomorrow what, where we can get the best deal.
Okay.
What do you need, just a regular sewing machine?
Just a regular sewing machine.
Like, you mean, you're not going to be sewing parachutes together or anything like that?
Not this year, maybe next year. We'll talk.
Maybe next year, good, okay. All right, great.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right.
Good everyone.
Thank you, Kim.
So you'll see that, so the, next are the school choice items, so this is one of the school choice items, the, what, what Kim just talked to you about is forty thousand three hundred and eighty-three dollars and fifty-five cents. There's another piece to this that we're going to kind of hold off on, and that is some movable walls to glass off that Makerspace piece. So, but I want to do a little bit more research, and the best way to do that, but that would be an ideal, too, is to have some movable glass walls so that you could isolate a space for a particular kind of work going on, and yet she would have full view of everything that's in the library. So that may come to you in the fall. The other piece is, we do Galileo, which is an assessment, and we're, we pay for that out of school choice, so that's what, the second item on school choice. And then your third item on school choice are for either new classrooms, as you know, we've got increased enrollment and we're adding classrooms. We need to add furniture for those classrooms, and they're listed in 1032. And then also, there's other pieces, you know, here and there, there are furniture pieces that we need to fill in. So we're bringing that all to you now so that it can be approved, so that we can make those purchases over the summer. And then the grants are on that sheet that you looked at. We only talked about one of them, but there are a number of other grants there, and all of these are grants that are submissions, not approvals. So it's just looking for permission to submit these grants. And then you have action items on your agenda for a number of policy pieces, too.
Okay.
For me.
Are we moving into action items? The policy, our home instruction. Five-two-seven, five-two-one-seven, second reading?
And the relations with police authorities, which is related to the resource officers, and that's also second reading.
Okay. Any questions? Do we take a vote on that?
There's an action item on the agenda.
There's an action item, right, okay. Well, what's the pleasure of the committee? When we bundle, we usually bundle, with the exception of eighteen-ten-thirty-five, we no longer need to take that up, correct?
Well, yeah, I do think there is some discussion on eighteen-dash-ten-thirty-six.
Well, no, that's, that's what I was going to say.
You're just saying all the others previous.
Everything except eighteen-ten-thirty-five and eighteen-ten-thirty-six. Do I have a motion?
No, wait a minute.
Motion made, second.
Wait, there was a minute, yes.
No, eighteen-ten-thirty-six is not included, right?
Correct. Right, we pulled, we pulled both of those out.
We pulled both of them.
Everything else is good.
Because this isn't, okay, needed now, tonight, one thirty-five.
So, action items eighteen-dash-ten-twenty-nine, up through and including ten, eighteen-ten-thirty-eight, excluding eighteen-ten-thirty-five and eighteen-ten-thirty-six. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Action made, second, and all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? There's your numbers. Thank you. And now, action item eighteen-dash-ten-thirty-six. To approve. I'll make a motion that we accept the recommendation.
Speaking on the issue?
Yes. Can we have a second, Ms. Reynolds?
Second.
Second, yeah.
And then we have discussion.
In discussion, yeah.
Well, so what are we voting on?
To accept it, but there's discussion on the, on the motion.
Okay, so...
All right, Ms. Reynolds.
So when I read this, I was surprised, because as a new member of the school committee, I, I expected that I would be part of that, well, I guess I'm part of the decision now. So do we consider this an open meeting on this, on this issue? Is that what this is now? Because we have to have an open meeting.
Right, this is...
This is an open meeting.
This is an open meeting.
So we regard this, this meeting as the open meeting regarding, and that's why I asked for the report as to what the committee had to say, why they were sending the suffere approval. I would have liked to have read that through to understand it prior. Now I'm going to have to adjust because I can't have it right.
I mean, if I could address that, the agenda for the policy meeting was posted, correct? Rick?
Correct.
Right, so that was posted at City Hall, just as the agenda for this committee meeting is posted forty-eight hours in advance.
So this is, well, I understood this came out of the personnel meeting.
Correct. And that, and the agenda for that meeting was posted as all subcommittee meetings are posted.
Well, we usually get a written report from the subcommittee meetings, and that's what I was asking for. Okay, well, let's go forward. So I would like to understand how this job position was posted, or was it posted, this opening?
As the chair, allow me to make, hopefully, what I consider to be salient points as to why we're, why we, I have put forward the naming of Bob Jokla as acting superintendent. We have consulted with Tom Scott and Mike Long, who happens to be legal counsel for Mass Association of School Superintendents, as well as Glenn Kuchar from the Mass Association of School Committees for guidance about replacing Superintendent Ravenel when he retires. So this was not done in a vacuum. Approximately one-third of all Mass Superintendent openings are filled by internal promotions. Due to the timing of Andre's retirement, it's not an ideal time to begin a search in the spring and summer. The best candidates are gone. This allows for a transition plan, June through October, with Andre and Bob. It allows Bob to backfill his position in the business office on an interim basis. It serves as a test drive, so to speak, as acting superintendent for both Jokla and School Committees, from October to January or February before deciding next steps, which may include appointing to a permanent superintendent or beginning a search in January and February if desired, better timing to attract candidates. It's best to decide and act now. We do not want uncertainty or speculation if no plan is in place at the end of the school year. The superintendent is a leadership position. We need someone with management skills, as well as political savvy to lead the district. He can hire great curriculum staff, that's his job. There are other, plenty of districts, plenty of districts where assistant superintendents of finance and operation, operations or business managers have transitioned successfully into superintendents in Massachusetts. I cite Blackstone Millville, Abington, Natick, Westwood, Narragansett, Taunton, Hampshire Regional. If Bob is named permanent in January and February, it gives him six months to set up his central office leadership team, replace Paula Giaquinto and himself, and we'll have, and we have great bench strength, ready to move up and do just, just that, excuse me. Those are some of the reasons that we believe, I believe, we're moving forward in this action item.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, but I did have the floor, and I happily yielded it to you, but it will come back to me, will it?
You have it.
Yeah, thank you. I also contacted the people, well, Mr. Kuchar, and he informed me that this is a, has to be decided at an open meeting, at which we have had none. So that's why I want, it's not simply that you, Mr. Mayor, or I don't know, your committee can move forward and appoint somebody. It has to be discussed, and each person's input considered. So I certainly consider your input, but I think mine is also should be heard, as everybody else. In fact, we've got to do this the right way, and as I understand it, some things have not, have, could be improved on. And I'd like to do it the right way. So again, I ask, was this position posted? Did anybody know, seek out any other candidates for this?
No.
No. And there was one other question I had. Did anybody ask our current superintendent if he would stay on? If not?
I'm retiring.
You're not retiring, so if your answer is no, I thought I would ask.
So I've already filed my retirement papers, and they will not be rescinded.
Okay, okay.
But thank you.
Okay. So I think that it should be posted, and I'd like to know who else would like to have this job, and that we consider who, who the best person is to have the job. If we, if we name an interim or an acting superintendent, that person has a quote "leg up" on anybody else in whatever date we decide that we should go forward in choosing a permanent superintendent. So I, we're not in any particular hurry. I would like to see it posted, I'd like to know the other people that might want this job. And I'd like to know the financial situation that we're talking about before we vote on it, not after we vote on it. I must say, again, perhaps the air is mine, but when, when Paula Giaquinto's arrangement, new arrangement went through, I, I was not knowledgeable about it, and I would, I'd like my vote to be made based on knowledge, and perhaps the lack of knowledge was my fault. I'm not sure, but it could have been. But I don't want to, I want to have knowledge on this, on this situation. And so for that reason, I would like to have it open, and perhaps the public also would like to, to have some questions. That's it for now.
Ms. Bell, please. Well, I do have a couple of things I'd like to say here. First, Bob Jokla is the consummate professional. I mean, any questions I've ever had about the budget or building facilities, he's always answered them fully and quickly. And I don't think that is the issue here. I think if, as an acting or interim superintendent, he'd be excellent. And many places do appoint interims. I, however, really can't go forward with this if we aren't committing ourselves to the next part of a process that's more open. I mean, when districts, I mean, there are really only four things we do as school committee members. We do policy, we approve a budget, we are a sounding board out in the community, and we evaluate and hire a superintendent. And I don't think, I just want, I want some assurances that we're going to have a very public timeline. I mean, I know when Falmouth was looking in February, they had focus groups and public forums, and it was a real chance for a community to express what they want in a direction for a school district, which I think, you know, candidates would welcome, and certainly stakeholders in our community would welcome, and I would welcome, as a school committee member. So, I mean, I would just say personally, I think Bob would do an excellent job and would have my vote as an interim, but I just, I want to know that we're committing ourselves to a more public process, that everybody gets a chance to say something about. That's my thought.
I agree that a thorough airing is knowing what we're doing, where we're stepping forward. And the summation that you just gave, Mr. Mayor, was, it seemed to me that it was, you had a plan, or if you, if that statement represents the committee, that your Personnel Committee had, had a plan for Mr. Jokla to go forward come January, and what he might do to strengthen his position. But I concur that we need to open it to other people in the public, so that it's not a done job quickly, and it's a thorough job. And we feel that we've really played our part in choosing, selecting the next superintendent. So she has asked for something in place that we know what we're doing, so the public knows what we're doing, so we can really air things out. Is that possible to do?
I feel very strongly that we move this at this point in time. I think we've made it public. This is an open session, you are voicing your opinion. We are looking for an internal candidate at this time. The mayor gave a number of reasons why at this point in time. And come January, at this point, we don't have to post that job at this point in time. It's something that we are asking to be filled on an interim basis. And come December, January, what the committee then would wish to do...
What committee, which part?
The whole committee, you know. If, the whole committee would wish to post the superintendent opening and then go through that process.
Could I just ask you, are you saying that there will be an agenda item that, that doesn't come out of a one subcommittee, but that we're all voting on, that we would open this up to a public press?
We would, we would have an agenda item to discuss the superintendent of schools and the direction that we were going to go in.
That would be, that would be the plan, no matter what, particularly a position at this level, would be, we would go in... this level. It would be, we would go into it as you suggested. You noted, you noted some other communities that have focus groups and all. We could do all of that. But again, we're giving, being given an opportunity to look and see how Mr. Jokla performs over this next six months. I think it's, I think it's a win-win. If he's not happy with the job, then that's a whole different story. If we're not happy with his performance, we can address it at that time. And, and again, this is not the optimal time to be looking for a superintendent. Most of the good candidates are already, they're placed. The time would be in the spring, if that's how, if we so chose to do that.
If I may, I think what is a bit frustrating for me, perhaps for, I don't wanna speak for Rosemary or anybody else, but I think there were points where I've kind of been asking, what is the process? People have been asking me, what's the process? And, and I haven't been able to say, and I've asked, and I called Glenn Kuchar myself, and it just shouldn't be like that, right? So I think we all wanna feel good about this. I think Bob wants to feel good about this, right? Like, so, and, and I agree. It's, we're at the end of school right now, and October is a difficult time, and people are in their, in their school year, and it's, but I, I just think, I know people have said to me, well, do we get a chance to weigh in? Do we get a chance to say things that, I mean, we haven't even asked a candidate, what's their vision for the Pittsburgh Public Schools? So that, that's really, I, if we can commit to saying that this is a process that we all would like to see, I think it would be good for Pittsburgh, it would be good for candidates, then I, then I'm totally happy with a vote tonight. I, it did come a bit as a surprise. And I, all I knew is the personnel committee was meeting to talk about process. So, that, I think that you're just hearing a little bit of, yeah, I don't, I don't have anything else to say. It's just.
I'd like to speak to this.
Go ahead, Jim.
In terms of the, the action item, it's very clear. We're looking to appoint Bob Jokla as acting superintendent. This is not a vote on hiring an individual for a three-year contract. And when we met in the personnel committee, we felt that timeliness is a key issue. Andre is retiring beginning of October, middle of October. And in my twenty years as a librarian, we never advertised for a position when it was an acting position for four months, five months, because people would not apply for something like that, knowing the uncertainty. And the feeling was that in terms of the best person to, to come in as acting superintendent, to overlap and work with Andre, was Bob. Bob's been assistant superintendent, I think, for about ten years. He's been on the executive committee. He's, he's familiar with all aspects of what's going on in the public schools, what, what has been done, what needs to be done. And as, as the mayor read, that come January, February, the committee can decide to go forward and, and post the position. I, I think, I get the impression from, from both, both of you, that it almost sounds like you think we're making this a permanent hire, and it's not. It's acting superintendent. And if we didn't act tonight, we would go the entire summer until September tenth, when our next meeting is scheduled, to find somebody to fill in within a month to take over when Andre retires and leaves. And that's all we're doing right now, is, is voting on appointing Bob as acting superintendent.
I, I will just say, I am well aware of what we're voting on. I also, I also feel like I have asked since Superintendent Ravenel's announcement about process, and really hadn't been satisfied about that. So I, I want a robust process for the city of Pittsburgh. And that's, so I'm, I'm, I feel like this is the time to say that. I certainly don't mean to construe that I don't understand that we're voting to appoint on an acting basis. I just, and, and I, like I said, Bob is excellent. I, it's just, I want to make sure that this is, this is a process that the public gets to, to speak on.
I'll just add, I consider, you know, listening to both sides, I definitely agree. I definitely think we should move forward with Bob, but having an open process and having focus groups could only be beneficial to every party involved. I mean, in Bob's, you know, task of finding a vision for the district, I think the more the community's involved with that, the better. So it seems like it's only, I feel like that's just a win-win for, for every stakeholder involved. I think that's a good idea moving forward. I don't know if that would be something we vote on tonight, to like, what the actual process would be.
But the process has changed, and I've been involved in a few of them. It will be an agenda item in the late fall to have the mayor appoint a committee. It's not the full committee. You may not be part of it, Rosemary, okay? It's up to the mayor to appoint a committee, which will be made up of one or two school committee people, some central office administrators, teachers, and parents, and community people. And if we decide to go out in a search, however we want to do it, and we, like this, the Tom Scott Superintendent Association says, most people are looking now to promote from within. So it could be, we have a half a dozen people who are certified as superintendents in the system. We might just say, okay, we might just open it up to our own system to promote from within. Or we might go out on a nationwide search, as they call it. And, but then that would be, that committee would look at the people and then come back with a recommendation of three people, and then we may interview the three people in an open forum, or, you know, so I mean, but at this point in time, people who are looking for jobs are not applying right now. You know, the best time isn't that January, February, where they're looking to start a July first new job, finish out their old job. Superintendent now, Andre, is leaving in October.
I, I think, I think I recall, Andre, I think I, I think I recall accurately, you had quite a rigorous procedure, right, before you, you had other people that were desirous to have that position, right? You were, yes?
The process is different everywhere. It depends on the, the district. It depends on the time of year. It depends on who were the candidates. It's, it's very, I think I was more of a, the, if there is a vanilla process, it was that.
Well, I remember, I remember you were excellent, and I remember another gentleman who also was excellent. I heard your speeches, it was excellent.
But I think, you know, Leominster, I think just last year or the year before, did something very similar, where the superintendent left and they appointed an acting or interim, I don't know. So it's really up to the school committee. I'm out of it.
Leominster appointed an interim.
Yeah. I feel that, just from this conversation, that the, that the people that were on this committee, this policy committee, you're, you're quite protective of and encouraging of what you three came up with. And I think what I hear us saying is, it was done totally without us, even if you say it was posted somewhere at City Hall. We are the school city committee. We should know what's going on every step of the way, be informed. Andre happens to be a fantastic communicator, way heads and heels above anybody else that I've seen, and you're kind of raising my standard. But I would expect that of all of us here on the school committee, that we would know, so that I wouldn't be kind of blindsided with making a, a choice tonight to fill a, a temporary position. But knowing that that gives you the gentleman, puts him ahead of the race for any full-time position. And I'm just, I'm registering that I think we could improve on, on how we treat the school committee members, because this is one thing that we have to vote on, that it is in our power, very, very few things are. And, and I wanna be as thorough as I can for the people. It's the people's monies that we're talking about. Okay? I think you all understand where I'm coming from.
I would like to move to. Yes, Ms. Cregan.
I've held off from having any comment, because I, I feel like I'm the only person here who read this as interim, appointing Bob as interim. And I think we need interim. And I look around, I've served on other boards and other organizations, and we, we need someone in the interim for exactly the reason that Pete and Jim said. We're not meeting again till September tenth. I have, I have full faith, having seen Bob over the last ten years, and again, his engagement and involvement with curriculum, with our schools, working with principals and all of that. I, I saw this, and I guess, am I the only one who just said, yeah, absolutely? So that's why I immediately held up my hand for a second. So, and I'm sorry, Mr. Stevens, I didn't mean to interrupt your motion.
What about the finances? How do we know that before we, we agree?
That's, it's on here, that's just to be negotiated.
And will we know about this? The, the other committee members know about this?
Yes, yes, because you're gonna have to vote on it.
Motion's on the table.
Make a motion to move it.
Second. Motion made and seconded to approve eighteen-dash-ten-thirty-six. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Can we have a show of hands, please? All in favor? All opposed? One in opposition. Thank you. That's six to one, right?
Yeah.
Right. There's no need for executive session.
Motion for adjournment.
Motion made, second. Oh, yes, Mr. Jokla, go ahead, yeah.
I want to thank the school committee for this appointment. I'm excited to continue working with the school committee, the dedicated educational professionals, city departments in the community, provide the best education possible to our students in a sustainable manner. The progress that the district has made over the past decade under Andre has been a team effort, and I plan to continue that team approach to seize opportunities and address challenges. My parents came to this country and settled in Pittsburgh to create a better life and have their children receive the education that they did not have the opportunity to get. My goal is to work with you and staff to continually lay in the education foundation for a new generation of Pittsburgh students to achieve the American dream.
Thank you. Thank you. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Before you all leave, can you sign your?